So this is Larry Murphy, Chair of the Newbury Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda and present are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Peter Pecos?
Yes.
Woody Knight?
Yes.
Mary Stone?
Yes.
In Town Staff, would you please respond in the affirmative? Martha Taylor, Planning Director?
Yes.
And Kristen Grubbs, Assistant Town Planner?
Yes.
And for anticipated speakers, we have Michael McNiff and Bob Griffin. See, Bob is here.
Yes, and Mike, I expect him to be here in my office in a few minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Steve Sawyer is on the agenda also, but I know he's running a little late. And we have Tom Woodruff from Governors Academy, yeah?
He's not here yet.
They'll be joining us, and I know Scott Kinter is running late as well, so hopefully he'll be joining us. So good evening. This November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Chapter Two of the Acts of twenty twenty-three, which extends the Governor's March twelfth, twenty twenty, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty, until March thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. This order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows public bodies to meet remotely, entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the Planning Board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website and which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http backslash backslash zoom.us and entering meeting ID eight three two seven one four one three zero five six and passcode one zero eight seven nine zero, or by calling one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine and entering the meeting ID number and passcode when prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video and/or telephone conference. The meeting is also being broadcast live through local access cable channel nine on Zoom and at www.tncTV.org, and the recording will be available on the Newbury Access YouTube channel. Meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak, and if needed, share information to the screen. Please state your intention after you have been called. Before we turn to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As Chair, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of board members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer using your mute button or your phone. You can hit star six to toggle to mute or unmute when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds or earphones with tablets or cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screenshot your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through me taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. There will be an opportunity for public comment and questions during public hearings. After the board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and/or ask questions as follows. I will seek questions and comments through the Zoom raised hand function. For video conference participants to raise your hand, hover over the bottom of the Zoom window below the photo gallery and click on the gray hand that appears. Please ensure your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the more function next to your name. For telephone participants to raise your hand in a Zoom meeting, hit star nine on your phone keypad. I will then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order in which they are listed, which is determined by the order in which people click on the raised hand function. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address and then ask a question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant, participant, or representative the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your question. I will then continue down the list of those in the raised hand column and again afford the participant applicant or representative an opportunity to speak. Should there be a physical or electronic submittal of questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record. And again, the participant, applicant, or representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not yet been addressed. And lastly, please note that each vote taken at this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Turning to the agenda, the first item or the next item on the agenda, I should say, is an A and R submission for Fartherland Drive, but Martha, I understand that that submission's not complete. Is that correct?
That's correct. They did not submit it. By the end of business today, so they have asked to be on the next agenda.
Okay, which will be
The twentieth.
The twentieth of December. Just, I should point out our next regular meeting is December sixth, but we're actually going to be meeting jointly that night for the sole purpose of with the Board of Selectment, excuse me, for the purpose of discussing the MBTA community legislation. So that will be the only item on the Planning Board agenda for that night. Next, I guess we can move to liaison reports because we still have a few minutes before the public hearing. Martha, anything from the Select Board?
Yeah, the Select Board met last night and major, major items on their agenda were, there was a presentation from Maureen Lynch of Whittier regarding the proposed new building. It went through discussion about the kind of the deficiencies in the existing building and the analysis that's been done about regarding building new versus renovating. They've hired an OPM who's gone through that, owner's project manager who's gone through that process with them. There is a regional vote scheduled currently for January of next year, but some of the communities are lobbying to have individual town votes instead. Another topic of discussion was actually the Pink House. Alicia provided some information about a informational session that will be held next Monday, the twentieth, I think it's at ten thirty at Peta Hall, which has been organized by Senator Bruce Tar in response to the announcement from Fish and Wildlife that they have decided that that they would demolish the building, but they've started a thirty-day comment period to actually take comments and sort of help, help the final decision making. So there's been some coverage on that in the paper, which you all might have seen. So those were the two major items.
Thank you, Martha. The ZBAA, the meeting tomorrow night, the regular monthly meeting. There are two new public hearings on the agenda that are, would be of interest to this board. We may see them in the future. We will see them, I think. The Sunset Club, they have petitioned for, among other things, the construction of a pavilion at the location on Plum Island and also the Foley Bittersweet Lane Common Driveway petition, which is on for variance. And that, that certainly will come back to us at some point for the decision on the special permit. And they're also, they have a pretty full agenda. They're also reviewing decisions for one thirty-four Northern Boulevard and nineteen Independence Way. So that's all I have for the ZBAA. Woody, anything from Conservation?
Conservation met last Tuesday. There's a few septic systems, fence, a couple additions on Plum Island, but nothing that pertained to us that I recall.
Thanks, Woody. And Martha, anything from MBPC?
The November Commissioners Meeting is going to be tomorrow. Major items on the agenda are going to be an update of the personnel policy and personnel evaluations.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda are our public hearings, but it's only seven ten, so we can't get into those yet. And next item, Steve Sawyer, we're waiting for him, as well as Governors Academy. Martha, you've got five minutes. Is that time for your Planning Directors' report, or do you want to hold that?
I think so. It's, I actually don't have a whole lot to, to report tonight. But following up on our workshop regarding MBTA Communities last week, as Larry said, the Select Board did brief, I, I put forward the invitation from the Planning Board to meet jointly on December sixth, and they did decided their meeting last night that they could all make that, so that's official. Kristen and I are having a brainstorming session tomorrow with staff from MBPC and also from Consensus Building Institute regarding the Housing Production Plan in-person meeting, which is scheduled for December eleventh, which is a Monday, and we'll be sending out more information on that as that gets finalized. And I think that's really, really about it right now. We're working on, continuing to work on the Hazard Mitigation Plan update, but that's really more hazard planning team as opposed to something that you guys are involved with, so.
Thanks, Martha. How about meeting minutes? Has everyone, we continued review of the October eighteenth meeting minutes from our last meeting. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the October eighteenth minutes?
Yes.
Is anyone have any suggestions for changes to the minutes as drafted? Hearing none, then would anyone like to move to approve the October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three minutes as presented?
Oh, moved.
Thank you, Woody. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mary. Any discussion on the October eighteenth minutes? Hearing none, then Pete, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So October eighteenth is approved. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the November one and November eighth meeting minutes?
No.
No? All right.
I have not.
All right. Shall we hold those then for the next meeting?
Okay, sounds good.
I know those went out a little late, Mary, so it's understandable. Well, we still have a couple of minutes before we can get into the into the public hearing and there's nothing else we can really take up right now, so.
No.
I'm sorry.
Just going back to the December sixth meeting, I just wanted to confirm that we'll be doing that in person, correct?
Oh, thank you. Yep.
Okay. Okay, yeah, the Select Board wanted to know that last night and
And that's on Tuesday? I'm sorry. That's on Tuesday or Wednesday?
Wednesday, Wednesday, December sixth. It's, it's the date of our next regular meeting, but we're going to devote it completely to the MBTA Communities.
Very good, sorry.
And on that note, actually, I guess the news today from Brookline was that they, they passed zoning that's inconsistent with the MBTA Communities and Arlington has as well. So we did have office hours. I guess I do have a little work for the planner's report. There was office hours hosted by HLC yesterday, which is an opportunity for people to ask questions about the legislation and meeting the requirements. And they will be providing listings of communities that have passed it as time goes by and ones that are working on it, so we'll be able to give more updates. It will be very helpful to see the zoning ordinances and bylaws that have been prepared by other communities.
Almost there.
And you said Brookline, Martha, is that correct?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, good. It is seven fifteen, Martha, so unless you have something else, we'll move into the public hearings?
No, I don't know.
Okay, so we have two concurrent public hearings on the agenda. The one is both relating to one seventy Orchard Street, map bar twenty, lot forty-three A, the owner applicant is the estate of Louis Bulgares, care of Diane Yurkovich. We, again, we have two public hearings, and I think a little review of the history might be helpful for people who are tuning in to understand what's going on here. We, some months ago, the applicant submitted a definitive subdivision plan and also a common driveway special permit. A definitive subdivision plan for approval only requires a majority or three affirmative votes from the voting members of the Planning Board. The common driveway special permit, on the other hand, requires what's known as a super majority, meaning four out of five affirmative votes are necessary for the for passage of the application for a common driveway special permit. When we started this process, we actually had five voting members. We lost one voting member when she was, Leslie Matthews, when she was appointed, excuse me, elected to the Select Board and of course couldn't continue on as a member of the Planning Board. That left only four voting members eligible to vote. Oh, excuse me, I'm getting ahead of myself. Mary Stone was appointed then to fill Leslie's seat. However, Mary was not eligible to vote on either the subdivision or the special permit. So that left four voting members for the special permit, myself, Peter, Woody, and George Morris, who tragically we lost a short time ago. George passed away. So that meant we only had three voting members for the special permit, and therefore it couldn't pass. So the applicant elected to withdraw the special permit application without prejudice and to renotice. So we're starting over again with the special permit. Now, as far as voting goes, only Peter, Woody, and I are eligible to vote on the, the subdivision application, but that only requires three votes. Mary, although you won't be able to vote on, on the subdivision, you're certainly welcome to join the discussion. As far as these, because we're starting over again with the special permit, that will mean that all four of us, myself, Peter, Woody, and Mary are eligible to vote on the special permit. I know it's somewhat confusing, but that's how we got to this, to this point. And we will have to start by asking Woody as a clerk to read the public hearing notice for the common driveway special permit application. Woody, do you have that?
Yes, thank you. Legal notice, Town of Newbury Planning Board Public Hearing Notice, Common Driveway Special Permit. Residents of the Town of Newbury and other interested persons, please, please note that on Wednesday, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, at seven fifteen PM, the Newbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing virtually via Zoom. Consider an application submitted by the estate of Louis Bulgares for a common driveway special permit for a common driveway to serve two lots, lot three and four. In a proposed four lot subdivision on, at one seventy Orchard Street, Newbury, Byfield, Massachusetts. Assessors map R twenty, lot forty-three A. Property owner, estate of Louis Bulgares, Diane Yurkovich. The proposed common driveway is shown on drawings entailed, entitled definitive subdivision plan for Fields Way, one seventy Orchard Street, Newbury, Mass. January twenty twenty-three, dated January fourth, twenty twenty-three, prepared by the Griffin Engineering Group, LLC. It described in accompanying, accompanying application materials. Copies of the application are on file with the Tom Clerk and in the Planning Office, twelve Kentway, Suite one oh one, Byfield, Mass. And are available for review during regular business hours. They may also be viewed, viewed on the Planning Board section of the town's website. For more information or to obtain a digital, digital or hard copy of the application, contact the Planning Office by phone at nine seven eight four six five oh eight six two, extension three one two, or by email at planningboard@townofnewbury.org. All persons interested or wishing to be heard relative to the proposed subdivision are invited to participate in the hearing remotely at the designated date and time from their computer, tablet, or smartphone at https slash slash us o two web dot zoom dot us slash J slash eight three two seven one four one three oh five six. Or by telephone by calling one nine two nine two oh five six oh nine nine US and using meeting ID eight three two seven one four one three oh five six and passcode one oh eight seven nine oh. Or may watch the meeting live on local access cable channel nine or at www.tncTV.org. And it says Larry, Larry Murphy, Chair, Newbury Planning Board, and it was published in the Daily News on October thirtieth in our November, November sixth of twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Woody. Martha, do we have confirmation of publication and about a notification?
Yes, we do. We received that from Bob Griffin.
All right, thank you, Martha. And I, I should have mentioned earlier that as to the subdivision application, the applicant has granted an extension of time for action to February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. So we have, I believe, now Michael McNiff and Bob Griffin with us. Could you guys just give us an overview of the project, please?
Yeah, good evening. And if it's okay, I'd like to share my screen and just go through a few slides.
Please.
Thank you. Hey, you can see the blue box, I hope.
Yes.
Okay. So and Martha asked me to go through some of the background information just because there might be some new people in the audience. And I won't spend a lot of time on this, but just to refresh our memory a little bit, the starred parcel is the parcel of concern. One seventy Orchard Street, it has this narrow strip that leads out to Orchard Street here. Orchard Street is to the right. It's about this narrow strip is about fifty feet wide and about two hundred feet long. The parcel's quite long from Orchard Street to the very far end over here is about two thousand three hundred feet. And at its widest point here, it's about six hundred and fifty feet across. You can see from the aerial photograph, it's primarily an agricultural use parcel. To the north of the land is the Pearson Drive subdivision. These are the homes and Pearson Drive looping around just to the north of our parcel here. To the south of the parcel is an unnamed intermittent stream that eventually feeds the Parker River here on the opposite side of Orchard Street. Zoning of the parcel is agricultural residential, which requires forty thousand square feet of land for a conventional lot. There's twenty point six acres total in the parcel. And of those twenty point six acres, about three point six acres are wetland and about nineteen are uplands. The topography is relatively flat. Varies from elevations approximately sixty at the highest point near Pearson Drive to as low as about elevation forty-six at the southern end of the parcel here. We came to the board following some subdivision and cluster and OSRD applications in two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen for a project called Forge Village. And we presented in about a year and a half ago now, this concept of a four lot subdivision plan with a five hundred foot long cul-de-sac, five hundred feet from Orchard Street to the very end here, and then approximately five hundred foot long common driveway. You know, lots one, two, three, four, these again, all have at least forty thousand square feet of, of land. So this was, this was the, the plan at the time. You know, four lots on twenty-one acres seemed like a pretty good density, and we've got good setback distances to the property lines, as you may recall. Good roadway access, good site distance at Orchard Street. There were a couple of waivers that were required, primarily one involved the width of this narrow strip. It's fifty feet wide where the subdivision regulations require fifty-three feet and doesn't have the flares at the end as the subdivision regulations require. But I think the, the feeling at the time was that this was a pretty reasonable use of the land. And when we filed in January of this year, definitive subdivision plan following, you know, we had the opportunity to do some more wetland work, do some soil testing. This plan, I think, was pretty faithful to the concept plan. This is a pocket wetland area here, and so we're basically trying to pick up as much water as possible from the cul-de-sac, get it into this wetland where it's treated in accordance with the state stormwater standards and then discharges off into this wetland at the southern end of the parcel here and eventually makes its way down to that intermittent stream and eventually to Parker River. This application was peer reviewed by Joseph Surlaka, PE of North Andover. I gotta mute my mic for one second because there's a train coming by. Sorry about that. We're good till eight forty-three, according to the MBTA. We, we also filed an application shortly after filing with the Planning Board. We filed with the Conservation Commission, and we have received an order of conditions for this project from the, from the Conservation Commission. We have had the opportunity during twenty twenty-three to do some more soil testing, and we made a number of project revisions over the last, you know, six months or so addressing various comments that were made. So the, the plan looks a little different than it did in January, but not a lot. And so I'm going to flip to the September, the current plan here. So here's our current plan. And one of the more notable differences is that we've created an additional parcel here. So this lot line sort of takes most of the land out of lot four here. And this is what we call parcel A. There's been a number of discussions with Green Belt, and the intention is to convey parcel A to Greenbelt so that they can continue to use this land for agricultural purposes. This parcel A is about thirteen point seven acres and about seven point six acres of that are actually agricultural fields. So I think about two thirds of the agricultural fields on the property get maintained as a result of this particular layout and this decision to create parcel A. The common driveway begins here at the end of the cul-de-sac. So again, we have a five hundred foot long subdivision roadway, and then we have a, a common driveway that's five hundred feet to the very end. It's about two hundred seventy-five feet to the common portion. So this portion from here back is only used by lot four. But in any event, the, the common driveway is, let's see, it's twenty feet wide, a pavement and approximately a thirty-foot wide easement. It has, you know, this T-shaped hammerhead at the end, which provides the opportunity for fire trucks to to turn around. It's not necessarily shown on this sheet, but there's a, there's a fire hydrant back here by lots three and four. There's also a fire hydrant in the cul-de-sac area for lots one and two. This September plan is a slight reduction from the previous layout of the common driveway. We took about thirty feet off of the length of the, the common driveway, and we moved the house on lot four a little closer to lot three. And this, I think, was in July or August. So this was some of the last changes that were made. And we, we did provide these plans to the Planning Board, I think, on September fifth or approximately there. And then we never got a chance to show them to you because of George getting sick. And so this is probably the first time you've seen this, but the only change that we made in September was really to the lot line here on lot four. This was in response to a Green Belt comment. They, we previously had a lot line a little lower down, and they wanted this easement area a little more narrow than we had, than we had, than we show on this particular. Well, they wanted it narrower than we showed in August, so that's why lot four has this shape at the lower portion here. And I'll, I'll show you a little bit more detail as we move along here. But I think the, again, the plan's been pretty faithful. It showed, this plan shows some of the changes made since we filed in January. So for example, street trees were added to the plan, shrubs in the cul-de-sac. Again, you know, here's the fifteen-foot wide access easement. Um, again, you know, here's the fifteen foot wide access easement for, uh, Greenbelt to get to the agricultural land coming off of the cul-de-sac here. Um, so this is, uh, this is our, our most recent, uh, uh, site layout plan. Um, we also had to show the, um, aboard, uh, and this was done in June. I think we did it once before this, but we had to show that it is viable with these lot lines to have two separate common drive, two separate driveways. So what the common driveway really does is it reduces the amount of, uh, construction work. It reduces the amount of disturbance in the buffer zone. And obviously, if you have, you know, one driveway, you've got less runoff than or less stormwater to deal with than, uh, than two driveways. So this was a, this was a common driveway requirement. Um, I'm just gonna, I'll go briefly over the, the subdivision layout aspects here. You may recall, we, we pushed the, uh, entrance to the north a little bit to, um, to avoid a telephone pole over here. There'll still be a re, uh, there'll still be a relocation here, but this worked a little bit better for the geometry of getting in and out off of Orchard Street. Uh, we made some changes this summer, uh, as to, uh, making sure that the house at one sixty eight uh, Orchard Street has access off of the subdivision, and they don't have to participate in the homeowner association costs of maintaining the roadway. Uh, the drainage system, here's the catch basins carrying the water to the pocket wetland. We also have a couple of infiltration structures here near Orchard Street where we couldn't get the water into the pocket wetland back here. Um, our drainage pipes, uh, again, all, uh, that has all been through the peer review process. And, uh, and I think that the cul-de-sac is pretty generously sized. It's about a hundred and sixty foot diameter to the outside property line. Uh, I think it's seventy foot radius to the outside of the pavement and forty five for radius to the inside. So the, the pavement width is twenty five feet uh, in the cul-de-sac area. It's, I think, twenty two feet with two foot shoulders on both sides in the straight portion of the, of the subdivision roadway. Uh, we've got a little bit of granite curving in here to make sure that we get the water into the catch basins, and it doesn't run toward neighboring properties. But, uh, again, pretty, pretty conventional road construction project. Um, this is the, uh, far end of the, the common driveway. You can see, you know, the common portion is about two hundred and seventy feet here uh, to, to where lot three branches off. And the total length here is four hundred, four hundred fifty, about four hundred seventy feet total, uh, to the very end of the driveway, uh, for lot four there. And this is the, uh, most recent layout showing the, um, the, and the agricultural easement in the preferred location, uh, the lot line in the preferred location um, as, uh, as discussed with Greenbelt. Uh, this plan is, I sort of, I think, it shows the overall site and, and the layout. Um, you can see, you know, lots one, two, three, four. Parcel A again is the largest parcel, thirteen point seven acres. Uh, part, uh, lots one and two are both forty thousand square feet, so zero point nine acres. Lot three is one point one acre and lot four is two point nine acres. You see, uh, aerial view, you can see, you know, the neighboring properties and how it's, uh, it lays out, and you can also see how the, the agricultural fields that will be, uh, the use will be maintained. Those agricultural fields are, have been used in the past for hay and corn. Um, and then I just wanted to, we, again, we provided these plans to you in September. There are very few, uh, changes to the definitive subdivision plans. Uh, but I'll just quickly walk through them in the cover sheet. We just noted that we had, um, uh, provided some, uh, we had addressed some comments, some planning board comments. That was the last change we made to the cover sheet. Nothing really changing here. Uh, our note sheet hasn't changed since we filed it in January. Uh, our existing conditions plan hasn't been updated since March when we, uh, I think we had done some additional flagging with the Conservation Commission, so we had to revise a couple of wetland flags at that time. Um, this is the other existing conditions plan. The back part of the property had, hasn't changed since January. Uh, September, um, this was, uh, the change that I just mentioned. This is this, this is what the lot line for lot four looked like in August. You can see just sort of a straight uh, L shape at the far end and the easement coming up like this. And this is what it looks like now. So the, uh, the lot line sort of follows the easement line a little bit more neatly. And, uh, so we took a little land away from lot four and gave it to parcel A. Um, this, uh, and the, the second lotting plan sheet, just changing a lot line over here is, is, it's just the other part that we just saw on sheet C four. So no changes there. Uh, this is the light layout and utilities plan. No real changes to this plan either, just again, the lot line. That was the change made in September. Uh, our grading, site grading and drainage plan, uh, moves the lot line, moves the limited work line for the contractor. And at one point this past summer, we added a fence along lot four, a split rail fence. So that's part of the project as well. Uh, last time, the profile was changed in August. The subdivision maximum slope on the subdivision road is three percent. So pre, uh, pre-flat, uh, subdivision. And then we had two detail sheets. The last time those were touched were in March. Uh, and that is it. I'd be happy to address any questions, and thank you for your patience.
Hey, thank you, Bob. Um, let me turn to the, uh, uh, board members. Uh, Peter, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I was just writing them down. Um, so, um, um, Bob, thanks for the, for bringing us back up to, up to speed uh, on this. Um, I don't know if you can go to one of your first sheets. I'm sorry, I didn't capture it. Um, yeah, that'll do. That'll do. Perfect. Uh, so I can appreciate the easement that's been modified. Um, did we talk about putting a, a, a fence between the, uh, lot lines and the agricultural area? Or do I, is, do I not, not remember that correctly?
No, I, I think the fence that we talked about was on the far side of lot four, and it probably doesn't show up on sheet C seven, but I think it does on C six, the layout plan where we put a, uh, a lot line out here.
So like a, a split rail fence?
That's correct.
Okay, cool. Um, uh, we're gonna be paving, you're gonna be paving the, uh, driveway and the common driveway?
Yep.
Okay. Um, are you gonna be paving one sixty eight as well?
Um, I, I think that the answer is yes, and it's subject to, you know, um, coordination with the property owner, but I think that's the intention.
Okay, cool. Uh, and did you have a lighting, uh, diagram for this?
Uh, I don't think we have any streetlights. We were relying on the lights from the, uh, two houses to light up the cul-de-sac area. There's an existing streetlight at the intersection of Orchard Street already. Uh, and so that was, that was the, uh, approach on lighting.
Okay. And I, I remember one of George's, uh, uh, things was having, uh, some sort of lighting at the entrance of the, uh, other than the, uh, the streetlight, some sort of indicator. Uh, is there any plan for that? A memorial stone or anything like that?
Um, there'll be a street sign certainly, but I, I don't think we had planned any pillars or anything like that, to tell you the truth.
Okay, so we're not gonna be, uh, dealing with any down lighting.
That's correct.
Okay, those are my questions. Thanks so much, Rob.
Okay, yeah.
Thanks, Pete. Uh, Woody, do you have anything?
No, I don't have any questions at this time. Thanks, Larry.
Okay, uh, Mary?
I don't have any questions.
No, nor, nor do I. Um, thank you, Bob. Um, and, um, Martha, do we have any public, uh, you have any, uh, written comments?
Uh, we received one written comment from Tom Frackey, who's at twenty one Pearson Drive. And I know that he is actually on, on, in the meeting tonight as well. We received that on Monday, the thirteenth.
Okay, then do we have any raised hands?
Uh, Jerry Strazula has raised his hand.
Jerry, a question, comments?
Hi, I'm Jerry Strazula. I live at one seventy two Orchard, which is on the entrance of Orchard onto move the cursor down, down, down. Um, nope, the other side. That's one sixty eight. One seventy two is on the other side of.
No, that's one sixty eight and this one seventy two, right?
There's a one seventy two.
Anyhow, um, this will be a private way, correct? I believe the last Zoom meeting, it was said that it will be a private way, not a town-owned road, correct?
Yes. Yes, yes.
Um, will there be sidewalks on either side of the entrance from Orchard onto the development?
Nope.
No, there are no sidewalks called out on the plan.
Okay. Would it be possible to put some sort of buffer on the other side of my wall to kind of mitigate any road traffic going in and out of there?
Yeah, it's, it is, it does look a little tight there as far as, you know, we've got to do some grading in that area to get the, um, the water to flow to the infiltration structures down here. I, I guess I would, I would, you know, leave it to you and Mr. McNiff to, or the estate to discuss that. But it, there is no, you know, specific screening on the plan right now.
Okay. My concern is just traffic going up and down. Um, when they do go down to harvest the corn, the machines kind of like, it's an eyesore. You know, if we could put some sort of buffer there, I do have tall growing, um, arbivites that buffer out some of it, but you know, with traffic coming in and out of there, the lighting and whatnot from cars. If we could do some sort of buffer, that'd be great. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. Uh, and maybe that's something, as Bob suggested, maybe that's something you and Mr. McNiff can have a discussion about.
Thank you.
Is that okay, uh?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Michael, you think you can have a, a conversation with him?
I'm happy to talk to Jerry about it. Uh,
Thanks, Mike.
Good to see you, Jerry.
Uh, any other raised hands, uh? Martha?
Hey, Larry. I'm not, not seeing any right now.
Uh, yeah, go ahead, Pete.
Uh, Larry, just to clarify, what, what, um, and I, cause I, I forgot what the conversation was. So Bob, uh, what was the buffer going to be along the properties for Pearson?
So we had, uh, we had basically maintained the existing vegetation along here. You may recall that at one point this spring or early in summer, we, uh, we took the lot three lot line and we moved, we made it, I think, fifty feet off of the existing property line. So that we were certain that when the forest main is installed, there'd be no disturbance of the existing vegetation that runs along that, um, the, the Pearson properties. And I think you can see it on the, the, on the aerial photograph, if I can flip to that. So all that vegetation, you know, gets maintained.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
So, uh, no other public comments, Martha?
I'm not seeing any raised hands. I don't know if Tom would like to speak to his, okay, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Your comments have been sent to the board.
Okay, good, thanks. Um, since technically, um, this is our first hearing on the common driveway special permit. I know we have been in, in the past gone over the common driveway requirements, um, uh, and findings. But perhaps we, uh, ought to do that, uh, again, Martha, if you can pull those up.
Sure. Uh, Bob, Bob, if you could stop sharing your screen, I'll pull those up. Thanks. So are you all able to see those?
Yes.
Yeah, um, so, uh, sorry, that's section ninety seven five three, the special permit, uh, required, uh, the planning board to make the following findings relative to the common driveway special permit. Uh, item A, the use requested is noted in the zoning bylaw as a special permit in the district to which the application is made. Does anyone have any questions or issues with that finding? No, I think it's pretty straightforward. Uh, B, uh, the requested use is essential and or requirements to public convenience or welfare. Uh, any comments on that requirement from any of the members? No, hearing none. Uh, C, the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly, uh, impair pedestrian safety. Again, any, uh, issues with the board members on that finding? No. D, the requested use will not overload public, uh, water, drainage, sewer systems, or any municipal systems to such a, and I can't see the entire text. Now, oh, in extent, that the requested use or any developed use in the immediate area or any other areas of the town will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting the health, safety, and general welfare of the community. Again, members, any questions or comments, issues with that? Um, E, any special requirements the use, uh, has set forth are fulfilled, and those would be the requirements, I assume, in the, uh, in the decision. And the requested, after requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts, nor be detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the immediate residents or the residents of the community. And once again, any questions, comments, concerns about that finding? From the board members? All right, hearing none. I think you can take that down, Martha.
Okay.
Um, so Martha, our next steps, what do we need? Um, I think we, uh, we need, among other things, a performance guarantee before the board can endorse the subdivision plan, assuming um, approval. Um, I, uh, do either, uh, Michael or Bob, do, do you have any thoughts about the form of the performance guarantee?
So the, the approach that, uh, Mr. McNiff suggested would be to adopt a covenant that prevents him from getting any building permits until the road is completed. And then, uh, go out and build the road, probably have, get it to the point that the binder course is installed. And then at that point, request a performance bond based on the estimated value of the remaining construction at that point in time. That would allow him to, uh, get the road, you know, substantially complete and then post a bond for the remaining value, uh, while he begins construction of the houses, guaranteeing that he'll place the final layer of pavement, uh, after the house construction projects are completed.
Okay, well, as you know, under the statute, the form of the performance guarantee is up to the applicant, so uh, we, we'll need that, uh, we'll need that in hand, uh, what we can, uh, uh, before, uh, any, uh, approved subdivision plan can be endorsed. Um, next, I think, uh, we need the, uh, we need to see draft deeds for lots three and four in a draft, uh, common driveway owners association agreement between the owners of lots three and four. And these have to be re, and again, that, the common driveway association agreement, as I understand it, it has to be between, again, the owners of lot three and four rather than all of the subdivision uh, lot owners. Uh, and they need to be reviewed, uh, and approved, uh, reviewed by town council and approved before, once again, we can endorse the common driveway plan and issue a con, common driveway special permits. So what's the status on those documents?
Uh, Mr. McNiff tells me that his attorney is gonna send those to the town this week.
All right, great, wonderful. Um, let's see. Just, uh, looking at my notes here, um, about any other information we might need. Uh, Martha, I think we have a draft deed from Greenbelt with the agricultural easement language. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and, uh, we also, uh, what other documents are we gonna need, Martha? It looks like drainage easements, documents to be drafted um, for the benefit of the HOA easement, for the benefit of one sixty eight Orchard Street needs to be finalized. And, uh, and, and, you know, we need an understanding that I would anticipate that, that, uh, uh, the parties are in agreement that an HOA trust and restrictive covenants will be condition, a condition of approval. I would expect that to be the case. Um, so what, what about those other documents? Where are we, where are we with those?
Anything else?
Yeah, I think we forwarded, uh, many draft aspects of it. We still have a couple left and after uh, to turn to Martha about it. I know some of these, it's utility wise, especially just telephone. We probably won't be able to get that until after we get the telephone, uh, electric company out there. They design their own easement. They tend to put that in afterwards, even though we put it in there. But all the, uh, I think the draft easement for the neighborhood one sixty eight, I think the, uh, subdivision covenants homeowners association may have been forwarded to you, Martha, I believe is on a draft. And the easements, as soon as we get finalized on it, we'll be able to put the meat and bounds on the, the drainage easements. Sorry, Bob.
Um, yeah, no, I, I don't, uh, we have indicated the location of the easements on the plan. Um, you know, typically we'll finalize those during construction when the pipe is actually in the ground, in case the pipe moves during construction. But, uh, you know, I think the, the number of pipes and their general location is already pretty well established.
So would you be preparing a separate easement plan? So would you be preparing a separate easement plan? Would that be, um, just included on the as-built after?
Yeah, I, I actually think the lotting plan that we've submitted includes some easement areas on it. I'll, I'll look at that while we're talking.
Are the actual easements?
Well, it, it all depends on how it's reached, because you're right, you can, you can write to easement to say that, you know, the easement is, you know, five feet on either side of the pipe. But yes, the, the lotting plan does show all of the drainage easement areas and it does, they are dimensioned. So, uh, I, I think as long as the pipes don't move during construction, you, you're all set. But if they do move during construction, we would have to move. Uh, or amend the lotting plan.
Um, let me, uh. All right, i- is there any other questions or comments from the board members, Peter? Uh, you're muted, Pete.
My apologies. Martha, do we have a grading, um, um, sheet to, demonstrating the houses of the heights and all that sort of stuff? I, I, I forgot where we left off with that.
Um, there was a grading plan. I don't know if it's. Been revised at all. We've talked about sort of grading up in the front and then. Um, Bob and Michael, uh, you know, kind of walking out in the back. And I think one of the conditions that we had talked about, as we have done for some of the other subdivisions, is to make sure that we get. Grading plans, final grading plans for each of the lots.
So, yeah, she, yeah, sheet C seven includes, you know, house locations and elevations of the garage, the basement floor, the first floor, things like that. But, you know, the, the houses may, the house design may change depending on the prospective purchasers requirements. Uh, so certainly the, you know, the layout of the house will conform to zoning requirements. Uh, I think these are probably pretty good locations and pretty good elevations, but they might change a little during construction.
Thank you.
Good, Woody, anything further?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you, Larry.
Uh, Mary, anything further? No, um, let me ask the board members, then, are, are we, uh, ready, I think, to, um. Ask staff to begin, uh, or to draft decisions for review at our next, uh, session of the public hearing? Peter?
Uh, yes. And the reason that, uh, yeah.
I'm sorry.
I, I was just going to say for public comment, the reason that we're at this stage is because we've, we've had the discussion with this, uh, site previously.
Yeah, this is certainly not the first time we've seen it. So, uh, Woody, are we ready to look forward to a decision?
Yes, I think so.
Uh, Mary, you in agreement?
Yes.
So Martha, I'll ask one more time if there's any other public comments.
I am not seeing any.
Very good. So my thought is to, uh, get this on the agenda for our December twentieth meeting to review a decision. Um, and, uh, I think, you know, it might. We, we are going to need those legal documents in place, and the sooner we can get those and get, get them to town council for review, I think the faster we can move this along. So that said, uh, I would entertain a motion, uh, to continue, although Mary, you're not eligible to ma, to move on the subdivision, so I'll take it. But, uh, ask for motion from Peter or Woody, uh, to continue the public hearing. Uh, on both the subdivision and common driveway special permits until our December twentieth, twenty twenty-three meeting at seven fifteen P M via Zoom. Do I have a motion? All right, thank you, Peter. Woody, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, uh, hearing none? Peter, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Mary, how do you vote as to the common driveway special permit?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So thank you, everyone, and, uh, we'll see you on the twentieth.
Thank you.
Thank you all, good night.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and, uh, we don't have Steve Sawyer, it, the one oh five High Road is the next item on the agenda. We don't have Steve Sawyer with us yet.
No, he just, um, he just emailed, um, saying that it's not looking good for him getting out of his Wilmington meeting in time for tonight's meeting. So I emailed him back to see if he'd like us to just pass over the one oh five High Road items. So I haven't heard back from him yet, so maybe we can move on and then come back to this one.
All right, thank you, Martha. Um, next we have, uh, Governors Academy, Tom Woodruff. And this is a request for approval of the, uh, record plan and determination of project completion for the new science building. Um, can you, uh, bring us up to speed?
Um, sure. Hi, good evening, everybody. Um, we have, uh, the building's completed. We had an engineer, uh, review and draft a, um. As-built site plan that I think you have copies of. Um, and I think we, we do have a, um, plant monitoring report from De Rosa Environmental, but that was submitted late. So I'm not sure if you got copies of that. The town, the towns engineer, Joe Sravatka, did not have it at the time of his review. Of the as-built plan, that was one of the comments, uh, but that has been addressed. In terms of his, his other comments, they were fairly minimal. Um, he questioned whether or not the, um. Grass pavers had, had been installed as specified on the original plan, and they have, they just weren't noted on the as-built plan. Um, I haven't heard confirmation on, from, uh, from our engineer Meridian on whether or not the. Water main was, uh, ductile iron instead of cast iron. I'm sure it is, but just need to confirm that. And, um, I'm trying to find the rest of his comments. I'm just. Pulling those out from memory, um. Oh, so a couple of elevations of, uh, infiltration basins, stormwater basins that he wanted to see on the plan. Aside from that, the, the project is complete and, uh, the building is in use by students every day. It's wonderful. If you'd like to schedule a, a site visit to see the building in use, love to show it off. It's really spectacular. Um. Any questions or anything else I can speak to?
Uh, Martha, anything you have before I turn to the board?
Uh, no, I don't.
No, uh, Peter?
No questions, looking forward to seeing it.
I'd love to see it myself. Uh, Woody?
I have a, just a curiosity question, and I do recall maybe a discussion about it, but I might be wrong. Uh, the dock in the boat. Does, does that come out or does that stay for the winter?
That comes out, yes. That is, uh, scheduled. The tide has not, the tide would have been good this week, but we, uh, we missed that. So we're sched, we have it scheduled to be removed the Monday or Tuesday after Thanksgiving. I think it's November twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth. So we will be removing that.
All right, when the tide's good again. Okay, I was just curious, I, I didn't see that survive in the icy winter.
No, yeah, yep.
That's, that's, otherwise it's great, thanks.
Good, uh, that it, Woody?
Yes, yes, thank you, Larry.
Uh, Mary, do you have any questions for Tom?
Uh, terrific project. Uh, I just can't wait to see it, so. We schedule something through you, Tom, or how does that work?
Sure, I'd be, yeah, I'd be happy to, um, to. Schedule a, a day whenever works for you. I can, I can, um, if you'd like to see it when students are there, that'd be fine. Or the week of Thanksgiving, that nobody will be, the crustaceans will be, uh, swimming around freely, but whatever is convenient for you all.
I'm a crustacean myself. Thanks a lot.
Uh, yeah, I, I, I think we're all anxious to see it. It sounds like a great project, and I echo what Mary said, um. And I'm sure the, these issues with the plan, you can work out with the, uh, with our peer review engineer. I don't see anything here that's, uh. That leaps out as me is problematic, leaps out to me is problematic. So I guess the question is, do we want to try to schedule a sidewalk now, or, uh, or Martha, you and Tom just want to try to work something out offline and, uh, get back to the members? Any, any preference?
E- either way, whatever works best for the board.
Okay, uh, someone.
Sorry, can I, can I have something, Larry?
You absolutely can, yeah.
Um. Do we have to have a, a group site visit, or can we go individually?
You could go individually, that's fine. I, yeah, I, I'm happy that my office is right next door. I'm happy to meet you and, and, uh. You could spend their time there alone, but I'd prefer to meet you just to explain or answer any questions.
Um, no, I meant, uh, thank you, Tom. I appreciate that very much, but what I was requesting from Larry is. Do we then, as a group, have to go together for a formal site visit, or can we?
We, we don't have to.
Okay.
Surely I'm just hearing from everyone that did love a tour of the place.
Yes.
Uh, you know, uh, why don't, Martha, why don't you and Tom work something out? With the holidays scheduling might be difficult, um, so, uh. Uh, plus I know you've got some vacation time coming up, so maybe the best thing to do is for you and Tom to talk and. Get back to the rest of us and see if you can come up with a convenient time.
That sounds perfect.
That work? Okay.
Yeah.
And I, I don't think, um. Uh, I don't think we need a motion on this because it's not a public hearing, so, um. We can, uh, arrange for the sidewalk, and then when you're ready, Tom, we can get you back on the agenda and get this thing closed out.
Great, thank you very much. If, if the site, the agreed upon sidewalk time doesn't work for anybody, feel free to reach out to me and I can. I'd gladly show you the building individually, so.
I, I actually, we do have a question. Are, are you going to have it open to the public at any point, or, uh?
Uh, currently there are no public events. There was one in October, the Museum of Old Newbury, um, uh. Put on an event on campus and they used the building for a couple of different breakout groups and, and, uh, work sessions. Uh, but currently there's not an, an scheduled day or event for an open house type of, type of event, but that's, that's a good question. I'll, I'll drop that. In the, uh, center director's ear.
Okay, I have a thirteen-year-old grandson would love to see it, so.
I, I'm happy to, I'd be happy to show it to you and, uh, you and him anytime, so please, I, I would have, be happy to, like I said.
Thank you, I might take you up on that.
I, I mean, I do mean it, really, it's a, it's an excellent place and we love to show it off, so please, please do.
Great, thank you. Okay, well, thanks again, Tom, and I guess we can move on.
Okay, thank you very much.
I think Janice Forrest has her hand up.
Hi, I just wanted to say I was at the October event. And we did go into the building and it was just lovely and very interesting. So many things there were very. Interesting to see the different, um, crustaceans and things, and just the view itself was tremendous, so it was a very nice building.
Oh, lovely. Looking forward to seeing it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Thanks, Tom. Thanks, Tom.
Uh, all right, next item on the agenda is Scott Hinter is with us. Scott, welcome. You're, you're muted, Scott.
Uh, there you go.
Okay, well, Scott, I understand you've, uh, expressed an interest in the, uh, filling the, uh, vacant seat on the board. And, um. Uh, we have your letter. Do you want to just, uh, give us a little background yourself and, uh, talk about your interest in serving?
Sure, um, um, originally, uh. From the South Shore, uh, grew up in Norah, Mass. Um, met my wife, Patty. She's, uh, originally from Newbury for her whole life. Um, she was a, uh, a Tumi, I'm not sure if you know Larry Tumi, but he was well-known in Newbury Port until he passed in, uh, last February. Uh, so I met my wife in, um, in college back in seventy-nine and, uh. The next few years of hitchhiking back and forth from Norah up to Newbury, uh, I got to, um. Really, uh, uh, understand, uh, why everybody really loves, loves it up here. Um, so we got out of college, we got married, I went, uh. Moved over to Salisbury and, um, back in the mid nineties, we moved from Salisbury to, uh, Newbury. Uh, we were down in, uh, off of, uh, Central Street. We, uh, we rented over there for a couple of years and. Um, then we eventually, uh, built the home in, um, Newbury. So I've been in the real estate business, uh, really my whole life. You know, really started working for a, a big real estate company back in, um, nineteen ninety-four. Um, and I worked as a, uh, um, really a field superintendent. Uh, I was, uh, I was the guy out, you know. Uh, you know, running the work, managing the subcontractors, uh, scheduling the work, um, you know, making sure we were on budget. And then eventually worked my way up and, um, became, uh, what I am now, the National Head of Construction. Uh, for really one of the largest publicly traded, um, uh, multifamily apartment builders, uh, in the country. Uh, and along the way, uh, you know, I got, uh, I was lucky, uh, to spend a lot of time, you know, with the, uh, the real estate developers. Uh, on the other side of the office. Uh, so, um, really learned, uh, uh, spent a lot of time, uh, on the design side, on the permitting side, on the entitlement side. Uh, going to, you know, many, uh, public hearings, uh, lots of zoning meetings. And, um. Yeah, and I've, uh, as you could probably see, I mean, I've, I've, I've got, um, a lot of experience. You know, I've built, uh, um. Over forty thousand, um, uh, residential, you know, housing units. Um, I'm not going to say I'm bored yet, um, but it's, uh, I'd like to get into, uh, maybe giving, giving back, um. I mean, do have a lot of experience. I think I might be able to, uh, uh, help the board. And, uh, the board certainly can help me. Um, I, I, as, uh, most of you know, I've been through, uh, and have, uh. Really worked very, very closely with Martha, uh, you know, the past, uh, uh, few years, I enjoyed it. Um, she taught me a lot, um, and what I liked most about it was, uh, Martha was, is, is one of the most professional. Uh, town planners that, uh, uh, that I've come to know. And, uh, spending time with the board, uh, the board, uh, you know, was equally as professional. Um, and, uh, I, um, I enjoyed my time. And, uh, it was, uh, um, it was, uh, it was interesting and I loved to learn. And I think, uh, I think I'd be, uh, I think I'm, I'm, I'm an excellent candidate and I'd love to, love to join.
Good, thank you, Scott. Uh, Peter, do you have any questions for Scott?
I don't have any questions, Scott. Thanks for your interest. It's great.
Welcome.
Uh, Woody, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but thanks. Scott, thanks for your interest in filling the vacant seat on the board.
Uh, Mary, do you have any questions for Scott?
Hi, Scott, I just, just very curious. Prior to Avalon Bay, I was employed by a local real estate development company in Andover. From eighty-six to ninety-three. What was the name of that company, Scott?
I worked for Ivan Cormier Construction. Um, Ivan Cormier came down from, um, really, uh, New Brunswick at, uh. In his early twenties and, uh, he bought a lot of land, he bought the indoor country club. Um, excuse me, so I, um, I started with him and, um, we did a project over in, um. Again, it's called Bricket Hill, um, and it's in Haverhill, uh, right near the class style line. Uh, and then I, uh, I did some, some, some condominiums, uh, out of state for him, and then I came back and did, uh, did a bunch of single family homes.
And the only other question I have, Scott, is I'm sure that you've, because of your interest, um. Have read the master plan that was recently developed and distributed. Do you have any comments about it? And also have you? Do you have other master plans in your experience to compare?
Um, I, um, um, forgive me, I have not read the master plan. Um, but I intend to, uh, and I'm hopeful that, uh, um, you know, I can be, um. You know, invited onto the board and, uh. And by that time, I will, I, we have met very, we have, I have many or much experience, you know, with, uh, with master plans. Master plans that include, um. You know, not only, uh, you know, for rent housing, for sale housing, uh, retail, uh, mixed use. Um, you know, we did a, a, a great project down in Plymouth, um, at the Pine Hills. Um, which was, uh, nationally, um, um, nationally renowned. It's, it's, uh. A great, uh, a great project, but certainly, yes, I have, uh, I have a lot of experience.
Okay, great. One last question, um. The, the reason I asked about the master plans. The, the reason I asked about the master plan, Scott, is that I wondered if you, um. Agree with the vision for Newbury that has been laid out, and that we all buy into.
Um, I've, I've been lucky enough, uh, to have, uh, a recent or fairly recent con- conversation with Kristen. Um, and she spoke really of the, of the plan at a very high level, um, and it was, uh. Uh, frankly, you know, I was, uh. You know, I've, I've talked to Martha in the past about, um, you know, have a lot going on, like, you know. But this house I, I recently finished, um, or I'm close to finishing, um, I don't think they ever end, uh, but. Um. You know, I, um. I really, you know, hearing from Kristen had a, had a lot of, uh, there's a lot of energy and passion. Uh, really in her voice, you know, thoughts about the master plan, and it was, uh. You know, it, it was one of the, and I, I knew I wanted to be on the board, uh, but it was one of these things that just. Kind of pushed me a little more deeply into it, um, you know, that I, that I wanted to maybe jump in now. Uh, so I'm anxious to read the plan, um, and I can certainly, uh. Uh, you know, get back to you. You know, and, and I could, I could.
Thanks, Scott, appreciate it.
Whatever you, whatever you need.
Alright. Thank you, Scott, and I, um, uh, I, I've obviously read your, your, uh, letter of interest, and I think you'd be an excellent candidate. Um. We, oh, Martha, I should say, are there any public comments or? Questions?
Hmm, none, none that I see.
Um, I, uh. We've been advised by Town Council that, um. The appropriate way, uh, uh, to address this is at a joint meeting with the Select Board, uh, to, uh. Uh, you know, vote, uh, on the, uh, filling of the seat. Um, would anyone? I, I think I'm hearing nothing but positive, uh, things from the board, um. Would anyone care to make a motion to, uh, recommend to the Select Board that, uh. Scott, uh, uh, be appointed, uh, to fill the planning board vacancy until the next annual town election?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you, Peter, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Woody, any discussion, then, uh. Peter, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Uh, Mary, how do you vote on the motion?
Oh, yes.
And I vote yes as well. So Scott, what we'll do is we'll forward that recommendation to the Select Board, there will have to be a joint meeting of both boards, uh, to vote on it, and would. Well, look forward to welcoming you aboard as soon as possible, because we can certainly use you. And, um. Hopefully, we can move this along, uh, Martha, is there anything I've forgotten, anything you wanted to add?
No, I think you covered it.
Okay, good, great. Wonderful, well, thanks again, Scott, for your interest, appreciate it.
Thank you very, very much, have a great night.
You too.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
So that just leaves one oh five High Road, uh, we haven't heard anything, uh, more from Steve Sawyer?
No, I thought I saw him trying to join, but I don't see him here now. Um, let me just check the emails again. Yeah, I don't, uh, I don't see a reply to my question, as I said, I thought I saw him trying to join, but. That might have been another Steve, it was Steve and Marie, and I know that's not his wife's name, so, um. So I don't know whether the board wants to have a discussion about that, or to table it until the December twentieth.
Well, let's, let's have a brief discussion, uh, about, uh, let me just ask the board members, uh, do. Uh. Do any of you feel that any of these items that have been requested are, are, are constituted major modification that would require a public hearing? Peter, your thoughts on a major or minor modification?
No, I'm not, not, not major.
Uh, Woody, how about you?
Uh, not major. No.
No, Mary?
No.
No, I, I agree, I think these are minor modifications. Uh, do we want to just go through the, uh, through the list that's been submitted and get a sense of where the board's at on that?
Sure.
Um, alright, uh, the first item is a two and a half foot drop in elevation, uh, of the Unit Nine Foundation in first floor. Um, we all had an opportunity to have a sidewalk, uh, the other day, uh, Peter, how, how? Uh, are you comfortable with that request?
Yeah, I've seen it, uh, makes sense.
Yeah, Woody, how about you?
Um, I was. Surprised that it was our, the foundation was already in, but other than that, it makes sense to me.
Yeah, asking for forgiveness rather than permission, but, uh. Uh, Mary, how?
But it makes sense to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's fun.
Yeah, I agree, I, I, and seeing it in person, it, it absolutely makes sense. Um, likewise, the next item is the changes to the materials height and layout of the brick retaining wall. Uh, between Unit Nine and one oh seven High Road, uh, Peter, do you have any concerns about that?
Uh, no.
No, Woody, do you have any concerns about that?
No, I don't.
Uh, Mary, do you have any?
No, no, no.
Nor do I, I, I think that's reasonable, and actually, um. Uh, given the, uh, the, the reduction in, in the elevation to Unit Nine, it's called for, I think. Especially the height. Uh, next item is the removal and repre- and replacement of trees along the property line between Unit Nine and one oh seven High Road. Which were identified, uh, on the approved OSRD site plan as existing to remain, uh, Peter, your thoughts on that?
Um, you know, it's unfortunate, uh, but, you know, uh, looking, it, you know, it looks like most of those trees probably won't survive as a result of. Uh, the, um, making the, the site work for the, for the foundation, um, so I think that probably. Just that clearing of that land will kill those trees, uh, so an appropriate, uh, planting plan. And my only concern there is, I don't know if, have you, is the fence, uh, one of the next points on, on your list, uh?
It's not, um, but it's certainly ripe for discussion.
So, you know, there's that fence that sits on the property, and so whether that's direct, you know, whether it's resolved now. Or how that'll affect the potential planting of new, 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 new trees in there, I think, um, perhaps that should be a conversation that we have. Uh, to kind of iron that out.
Yeah, I agree, it, that, that fence is, uh, actually, it's, from what I understand, from what I understand, it's the, uh. Um, the abutters fence, but it's, uh, oh, help me, Martha, was it twelve, fifteen feet or something like that encroaching?
Um, uh, at the widest point, it's maybe about ten, I think, and, and it's, it's kind of triangular encroachment.
Yeah, and the issue, uh, I think is, um, uh, to me, anyway. Um, is, uh, if that fence remains in its current location, can they effectively? Replace the, the trees there, you know, put up the appropriate vegetation. So, um, my own opinion, I, I'm getting ahead of everybody, but I think maybe we need to have Steve come in and talk about that at some point. Uh, Woody, do you have any, any thoughts on that?
Well, the. It would be nice if it was, the, that was resolved, because, um. You know, whoever ends up buying Lot Nine, and. It don't want to have it become a problem in the future, I guess. Between the house out front and, uh, that put the fence there and whoever purchases Lot Nine. So I don't know how they go about doing that, but they probably should have a discussion. So that the fence can either stay or be moved, I guess, is what I'm getting at. Because it is over the property, it is, it, it will be on the property a lot night, correct?
It is, that's my understanding, yeah, so, and it's a fairly narrow strip between where the fence is and, and the retaining wall begins.
Right.
Right. Mary, anything you wanted to add to that discussion?
Yes, I agree with Woody that I think it needs to be resolved in advance rather than after the fact, but. You know, that's just.
If we don't hear from Steve, um, by the end of, uh. Uh, the meeting tonight, maybe we can invite him back to at least talk about that issue. Um, and lastly, on my list. Hope we're not missing anything, um. Uh, is the, uh, oh, the patios, I'm sorry, I have two more items. Uh, again, a question of, uh, forgiveness rather than permission, but, uh. Uh, they have added ten by twenty patios engraved within the exclusive use areas of units one through nine. Um, Peter, any concerns about that?
No.
No, Woody, any concerns about that?
No, not, not, I'm in the situation where it is, it, it won't affect the run.
Mary, any concerns about that?
No. I didn't see.
I, I, nor do I, and lastly, there's a request. Uh, for the addition of a swimming pool with an exclusive use area, Unit Nine. Um. The only thing that troubles me a little bit about that is we don't have the, uh. Uh, the owner of, uh, uh, I'm sorry, I said Unit Nine, I meant Unit Four. Uh, we don't have, uh, that unit owner as part of this discussion, but, uh, frankly, having. Uh, you know, taken the sidewalk, I didn't really. See any real issues with it, but, uh. Peter, your thoughts on that?
There's lots of bug spray.
Yeah, okay, Woody?
Don't forget the sunscreen.
Okay, and Mary?
I guess I agree with those guys.
Yeah, okay, and I, and I'm in agreement. Uh, Martha, do we need a formal motion on any of these?
What we've done in the past is, is actually even for minor modification, we've drafted. A decision as a minor modification and then had the board review that.
Okay.
So, um. They drafted based on the discussion that the board had tonight, and in the meantime. If we can get Steve back for the next meeting, the twentieth, we could finalize the discussion about the, the fence.
Good, good, sounds like a plan. Okay, um, I think that brings us to the end of the agenda. Anyone have any, anything else before we adjourn?
Um, just. Go, go stepping back to, uh, to get to. Um, is that something we can address with the joint meeting with the selectmen on the sixth, or is the? Meeting with the selectmen. Um, going to have to be just MBTA?
Uh, the plan was to devote that to the MBTA, uh, at least our portion of it, I don't know, I mean, that's, uh. I don't know if the selectmen intend to put anything else on the agenda. That said, um, the sooner we can get someone on board to fill this, this position, the better. So I'm gonna. Whenever I don't have an answer, I turn to Martha and say, Martha, what do you think?
So the, the, the Select Board's next meeting is November twenty eighth, so my hope was actually that, that, um. Mr. Kinter's appointment could be on their agenda for that meeting, and if, if all of you can make it to that meeting, then it could happen then.
Oh, even better, we can, uh, we can.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm available the twenty eighth, uh, how about the rest of you, Peter, are you available?
I believe so, I'm checking right now.
Okay, and Woody?
I, yes.
Yeah, and Mary?
Yes.
It would be a joint meeting, um, but the only, uh, item we'll put on our agenda is just the appointment. So our portion of the meeting should be pretty quick. And that'll be live, of course, that'll, that will be at the, uh, in person.
In person, right, in the hearing room. So I will follow up and, and, uh. Got the recommendation and, and, um. See if we can get it on, on the agenda for the twenty eighth.
That'd be great. Okay. Anything else?
Just wondered, uh, and I don't even know if I'm allowed to ask this, but. Do. Larry, Larry and Martha, do you guys know, um, this, to Mr. Kinter, Scott? Kinter?
I only know him from his appearance before the board.
Oh, okay, Martha?
Yeah, I. Yeah, I only know him through, you know, through working with him over the past few years, and he had actually. Several years ago, when he was contemplating moving and building the house and moving into town and expressed interest at that time and serving on, on. Either the planning board or the ZBA, so it's something that he's been thinking about for a long time.
Right.
Um, you know, wanting, as he said, to, to, to give back and, and participate in the town, so.
Okay, thanks, Martha, I was just curious. As you guys seem familiar with him.
Just. Just from, uh, dealing with him, Mary, do, do you have concerns, or?
Do I discuss those here, I don't know.
Well, I, I think, um.
It seems.
Since Scott is gone, maybe you might want to reserve those, uh, any comments or further. You know, that, we, we didn't appoint him tonight, we just agreed to recommend.
Okay, I understand.
To the Select Board, and there'll be an opportunity on the, uh, twenty eighth, assuming we're on that date, um. Uh, you know, for further questions, so. In my, my understanding is it, it's, uh, in, in order to make the appointment, it's a majority of, of all of the. Uh, members voting in presence, so it doesn't necessarily have to be, be a majority of one board or the other. As long as, I mean, we'll have nine, you know, five select board members and four of us, so we'll need five votes. From any five votes in order to get him appointed, at least, that's my understanding of how it works anymore.
Interesting.
And you'll have an opportunity for further questions, but I think if he's not here to answer any questions.
No, no, that, I. Hundred percent understand, Larry, thank you, thanks, Woody, for bringing that up.
Alright, anyone care to move to adjourn?
I'd love to adjourn.
Thank you, Mary, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Woody, thank you. Uh, any discussion, hearing done, Peter, how do you vote?
Yes, thank you.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes, and good night, everyone.
Uh, Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes, as well, so we're adjourned at eight twenty-six, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.